Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the work session on June 25th, 2020, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the Governor's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law. This meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Penfield's website, www.penfield.org, and on the Town of Penfield's government access channel 1303. Meeting will also be later transcribed. With that, Lori, could you please read the roll call?
Sure. Hetzke?
Hetzke here.
Bastian?
Bastian here.
Canauer?
Canauer here.
Tidings?
Tidings here.
Burton?
Burton here.
Nurseinger?
Here.
Sangster?
Here.
O'Connor?
O'Connor here.
Weisar?
Weisar here.
Gray. Here.
All right. Okay, thanks, Lori. Welcome back, everyone. We have minutes from the June 11th meeting that hopefully everyone has had an opportunity to review, and if someone would care to make a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve Tidings.
Bastian will second.
Okay, moved by Tidings, seconded by Bastian.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. Minutes are approved. Zach, would you like to go through our tabled items and the rest of the agenda?
Sure thing. Let me just start screen sharing so I can share it to the world and our visitors on Zoom. Oh, I hate this thing. Move this. Okay, so our first and only table item this evening is for the cell tower compound improvements at 1415B Five Mile Line Road. This is for Crown Castle there. Our applicant, Anne Marie, is on the video, is on Zoom if we have any questions for her. But I'll go through the updates since the last meeting. What I have up is the site-
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'll be recusing myself from this matter.
So noted, Mr. Burton?
My apologies. Thank you. Carry on. So I have the site plan up on the screen here. No major changes have been made to other than some labeling that we caught during the first review process. We did issue some technical comments today, mainly about signature block lines and a couple of silthons details, but those are going to be addressed as we typically do. So, looking past that, one of the first things the board had concerns about, and it's something that we've discussed since the meeting, is the buffering of the site. What does the existing vegetation look like out there? We had initially discussed having the applicant provide a line of site exhibit. However, since the meeting, Board Member Canauer was able to visit the site between the meeting and now. He took a look at what was out there, and for that existing vegetation, we had a caller come in, speak about potentially a fallen tree that we think could actually have been the radio tower site, because if you're looking at the site, we had site photos, and Bob also took some site photos and showed me, and Bob, if you want to chime in when I'm done, feel free to. What we saw out there-
The building is full and you have to clean up your android.
Wasn't android.
Whoops. I'm using my subtle meter.
So, here we see is a pretty good exhibit of what someone on the other side of this tree line would see from Greg Circle. And as we can see, it's pretty well established, and Bob, I'll leave it to you if you want to have anything to add to that.
Sure. The concern was the height of the equipment, the enclosure, and after going to the site and seeing the vegetation that's around the site, for the location, the buffering would completely cover, buffer, even a 20-foot structure there, so the impact would be, for visual, outside of the footprint of the site would be nonexistent.
Okay.
Okay.
Which, maybe this site's a little bit more unique, but that's when I contacted Zach, and the suggestion was that the applicant, I thought it wasn't necessary to do a rendering of the visual.
And following that, we communicated that to the applicant, so that's the reason why you don't see that in your packet tonight of their responses and recent mittles. We had that conversation leading up to this meeting.
And then there was, when I was on the site, I noticed, and probably I know the prints have been updated, there was one that was talking about a future equipment pad and generator, and that has since been used by AT&amp;T, but that's already within the footprint of the existing project, so that kind of just, I guess, clarified the existing prints.
Yep.
Okay.
That's what we-
Thank you.
That's what's captured on this site plan here that we have up on the screen. So after that, we also discussed the item of noise, and how noise generated from the improvements proposed, how they would be noticed by the surroundings. So, one of the first things we see that the applicant provided, and I'm just going to pull it up here, you have printouts of it, is the decibel level comparison chart, and if I scroll down, they've added notes for what is the observed sound. Oh, don't you dare. Don't. Apparently, I'm getting a PC needs to restart prompt from Windows.
Can you deny it?
I have no idea. Oh, if you- Nope, that's a support person. Something still up. Well, you know what? We got paper copies. Oh, Zoom's gonna- Dave, if you can take control of Zoom, do it, or I have to switch it back over to you. Oh, no, where are you, mouse?
Okay, let's get it restarted as soon as possible.
Well, maybe he maintained control on their end. Someone did. Yes, great job, boys.
Okay, do we still have all of our people remote? Lori, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Doug, you're there?
I'm here.
Anne Marie?
Yes, I'm here.
Rob?
Yes.
Marcello?
Yes.
Okay.
Apologies.
No problem.
Pete's here, too.
Oh, yeah, well, I see you still there.
Don't forget about Pete.
Hey, Pete, you there still? All right.
Only person not there is me.
While you're restarting, I think that we can continue discussing-
Yeah, if you guys want to continue your discussion about the sound.
-some potential comments about the decibel levels.
Yeah, at the meeting two weeks ago, we were told it would be 90 decibels at six feet from the enclosure. Turns out, it's 90 inside, 60 decibels, six feet from the enclosure, and then if you look at the nearest property, it's about 336 feet away, so your decibel drop, your noise reduction is going to be about 35 decibels. So it's going to be in the 25-decibel range. For point of reference, the decibel level in this room right now is about 68. So 25 decibels is, I'm not sure you'll even hear anything. That's low. So I have no issue with the noise generated at this point. I'm satisfied.
Okay. Great. Do we have any other outstanding issues on this? It was mostly the noise and the site.
I just, I did want to provide the final visuals-
Okay.
-of what it was going to look like. You do have paper copies in front of you that were submitted in that packet. It was, the applicant actually provided a PowerPoint slide of kind of Phase 1, Phase 2. I'll pull it up. I am back on, I just have to be led into the meeting.
Zach or Bob, just one question. Do we know where the other two locations-
I'm letting you in now, and I'll reassign you as host.
Thank you, Ryan.
Ryan, Marie? The other two locations, they mentioned three in Monroe County.
The two locations similar.
Zach is host now.
Thank you, Ryan. I don't believe, and I'll ask Anne Marie to confirm that, I believe this is the third location, more in the region than Monroe County. Anne Marie, can you confirm that?
I'm sorry, folks, it was hard to actually hear the question.
Board Member Tidings asked if, during your presentation, you had mentioned that there are three of these locations, and he asked for clarification if that was in Monroe County or, like, regional or nationwide?
I know of regional. They're not all within the county.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, then they requested several variances. Do we know how many variances were approved?
All the variances were granted. They were for front setback for the telecommunication structure regarding its proximity to the front setback, and then expanding of the use on the property in the residential zoning district.
Thank you.
Okay.
I am, give me a minute. This is what I want. Yes, thank you. Sorry about all that. Computer hasn't been on in a while, apparently. So, now that I do have this up, looking at the phasing, they broke it down in their response letter as well about how the pad size will increase based on the infrastructure that will come with this, all that's represented on the site plan. What we see in Phase 2 is the equipment that will go in. So we had kind of two different representations shown during the public hearing. This is what is expected to be there, about, you know, under that 20-foot height. This would be, this is the equipment installed inside for the computer system, and then finally, what the, how the gate and security system will look on the outside, pretty standard. I think this is the picture we were looking for to confirm what it was going to look like.
Sure, yeah.
So, other than that, I have no additional updates on this. Staff is satisfied with how this, the state of this project. It does sound like the board is satisfied with both noise and visuals of those primary concerns that were brought up. Zoning Board has granted its approvals at their previous meeting. At this time, if the board would like to make a decision on this matter, you can unless there's other further discussion you'd like to have.
Does anybody have any other issues? Everybody good?
I'm good.
Okay, so we need to do an approval of the EAF first?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the EAF.
I'll second.
So we have moved by Canauer, second by Bastian for the EAF.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, that passes, and then maybe authorize approval resolution?
Sure. Has that been prepared?
Yes, template's ready.
Okay. Move to approve the approval resolution for this project?
Bastian will second.
So we have moved by Canauer, second by Bastian again.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Thanks, Anne Marie.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a great 4th of July.
Likewise.
And I'll be in touch with all the follow-up information, Anne Marie.
Wonderful. You guys have a nice night.
Thanks, you too.
Okay.
So, that concludes our table applications. We have one action item this evening. It is for the project of Penfield Square, and I will remember this time that Board Member Canauer needs to recuse himself for that, and we welcome back Board Member Burton.
Yes, we do. In person.
This is true.
This is the first time.
So, back to Penfield Square. Recent, your last meeting, the board approved some color changes to the exterior materials on the independent living building that is going to be managed by home leasing. Episcopal Senior Life has now come to us with a similar request for materials modifications to the exteriors of the assisted living building and the memory care building. So, in front of you, we have their email explaining everything. Your first packet of plans is what was approved with callouts of items they want to change in terms of the brick veneer, the knee wall that you see. They want to make some modifications based on some conflicts with the windows, and also on this first image with the assisted living building. Let me just pull this up for us, I'm sorry.
We're talking about the two-story structure.
Two-story structure for the assisted living.
And the new proposed is A203, and the original is A001, is that correct?
Proposed is A001. It has the material-
The proposed is A001.
Yes, it has the material callouts.
Right, okay.
So what you'll see is the elimination on the proposed, you'll see the elimination of that brick veneer due to the extensive landscaping that has also been provided along the wall. Don't stop. We do have an exhibit of the landscaping plan for reference. The applicant has highlighted the areas where the landscaping would basically cover this treatment if it were there, and they're asking to remove it from certain sections of that part of the building, along with the material, I'm sorry, with the color changes that you see on the A001 sheet. We do have the applicant participating as well, if the board does have any direct questions for them.
Yeah, I guess I do. Rob, if you could take yourself off mute.
Hello?
Can you describe for us the changes on the east elevation on the, I guess it would be the north end? Looks like where the, maybe where the bridge is? That looks like a pretty substantial change, as well as the south elevation on the east end.
So, without seeing those, I believe what you're talking about are the two pieces that, at the conceptual presentation, were rendered as brick, right? So, to the right of the, to the right of the bridge, we see that, and the image presented now rendered as brick, and then I believe one of the end cap stair towers, or the end cap, yeah, was also brick. I'm not sure what that space was. I think it was a mechanical room or perhaps a cafe. I think in the development of the, of the project, the area around the walkway required a 10-foot rated separation from every opening around it, so it resulted in a large mass around that walkway. So that was the change architecturally, and then the change to the ephes in lieu of brick. Honestly, I can't quite speak to that change, whether it was a change due to the makeup of the wall requirement, but I wouldn't think it would be, so.
Rob, can I interrupt? Would you like, do you have the files on your computer? Would you like to screen share and kind of walk the board through that?
I do have the files on my computer, yep.
All right, I can turn over the screen share to you. I feel like you'll probably get through this a lot quicker than I will.
Okay.
All right, one second.
Give it a shot. You tell me when you're seeing my screen.
All right, you should be able to screen share now.
Are you sharing video?
Maybe I probably have to turn your video on.
Are you seeing my rendering now, or no?
No.
Not yet. Try turning your video on.
I think that's just going to be me.
Now we see you, that's good.
You should be able to pick a window or a section.
There we go.
How's that?
Perfect.
Okay, yeah, so the, I was speaking to the walkway, which is on the east side, right? Yeah, the east elevation. So, the walkway required a two-hour separation around it from all penetration for a distance of 10 feet, I believe, so that resulted in this, you know, sort of large mass around the walkway that really did change the architecture and the massing, and then with, you know, further development of the kitchen as well, you know, we've got the kitchen, the cooler and freezer here as well. Other than highlighting some of those areas which were areas we didn't want to highlight, previously it was brick to the right of the walkway, we decided to not highlight those areas. The bridge will be a highlight, and then, of course, the bridge tower, which supports that, will be a highlight as well. So we treated the area around the walkway and this area and ephes. So we have not selected color, we've got the samples on their way. I have requested samples that are much lighter than this gray tones, that would be more in the tan range, the more earthy range that would go with the brick and the siding selections, so not a dark gray is rendered here. And that would be same as the end of the building, which is stair tower, which you see on the east elevation, as well as the south. There had been previously a small, a small brick projection here at the first floor, you know, which I think had been a mechanical and schematic design, is now a stair. So, it looks like this was being used as an architectural element to tie a bit to the independent building, a little bit more of a modern take on some of the character pieces there. Again, this will be rendered in the same lighter, more earth tone variety or color of ephes rather than this dark gray.
Is there something that can be done? I mean, look, I'm not an architect, but it looks to me as if, well, we ran out of the right stuff, so we threw this up on those spots.
Yeah.
And is there something that could be in between?
Do you think, looking at the color and patterning of within the ephes, if we did that so that we could stay within the same material, now that we're under construction and the backup is there, so it would have, you know, different veneers would have different backup systems, and I'm afraid I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to commit to a change in the backup not knowing where we are. Well, I know where we are, you know, the roof is on and done, so, you know, the walls are all sheathed as well. Do you think that might be something to look at? We, you know, look at adding a second color to that, adding a patterning that in some way breaks down the scale of that, what is otherwise appears to be a sort of plain gray mass?
Yeah, I mean, there's, I think that something needs to be, to be done. I'm a little surprised that it was prepared to this level without letting us know. You know, I was under the impression that really all we wanted to do is see a change from white to tan on some of the siding, and this, to me, anyway, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but this is more of a substantial change in the overall appearance of the structure, and with this, I know that everybody, when we went through the original process, everybody was well aware that we're going to be under a microscope for this first mixed-use project, and I'm concerned that we're going to get something that's not what we expected and not really what we want.
No, I do understand. That's why, you know, I pointed out the changes of the brick, you know, yeah, we started last week. I was pulled back into the project to help with construction administration and submittals and colors and all. So as I started to prepare the materials for the color change of white to off-white, is when I realized that the brick had changed and the stone had been lowered, and the change of the ephes as well, but, which I could have called out. So, yeah, no, I agree. So, want to be forward about the stone and the brick changes and make sure everyone's comfortable with that. And if we can look at the ephes and patterning and color in a way that'll maybe look back at the original submission and see how that was treated. Now, some forms have changed, too, because of the planning of the building, but to the extent that we can move backwards in that sense to breaking up the mass and providing a palette of materials and colors that look like, look a little bit more like the original in these two areas, if that's acceptable, we'll do that.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remind everybody here that we did go through a pretty exhaustive process of reviewing the facades of all of these buildings, and we brought our architectural consultant in to give us his opinion on some of the options that were being presented by the applicant. And at this time, I don't have any difficulty with the substitution of ephes in some areas, and the applicant's consultant is suggesting that perhaps with some coloring and texture and some embossing maybe of the foam, that they can present some things that might be acceptable to the board. So, I'd like to suggest that we ask Rob to present a couple of different options that we can then share with our architectural consultant, so that we can go back and revisit all the comments that we used to develop our approval process when we originally approved the project.
I think that makes sense to me.
It makes a lot of sense.
Bill?
I'm in agreement.
Terry?
I agree.
That be okay with you, Rob?
I would, yes, that's fine. We can get, we can make those studies next week and get them to you and Zach on scheduling.
All right, thank you. I guess while you're, while we're all still here, though, Rob, could you, I know we got a little sidetracked, can you go over some of the proposed material or color changes that are definite, that are represented on these plans, so we can address those this evening?
Yeah, sure. On the memory care building, or the one-story buildings, the original plans- The original plans had called out a white and a gray for the vinyl siding. The selections of the vinyl siding, they have what is an off-white that we felt would look better, less stark than like an envelope white. And since the IL building was doing the same, we here are proposing simply to change our, our white vinyl siding to this what is called herringbone, which I would just simply call an off-white. So that's the easy part of, of what we're asking for. I hope that's easy. The other change that you see here, if you, if you study carefully the original submission, the, the stone around the windows had previously been shown up about eight inches. So it came up and then went down to the sill, and it came up and went down, it came up and went down, similar to what you saw in the, the other building. And that really resulted in a terrible detail that just, it didn't work. Because of cutting around the window, the shutters and all with, with the stone veneer. So we had lowered the stone line from, you know, eight inches above the sill to flush with the sill. Then also had realized that what we had presented initially had showed the ground level at finished floor line. Which of course is, is wrong. The finished, the ground level would be eight inches below. So in this elevation, this rendering, we show the ground level lower, which exposes more stone than we show the sill level lower. So the, the net amount of stone is still the same, it's just it's shifted down to align with the sill and providing good detail. Similarly, at the two-story building, previously in the image that I think Zach was showing, there had been the brick base that went around the entire building. Again, similar detail where it was just above the window sill, resulting in like this sawtooth look all around the building. Same, same, you know, problem with the detailing. So when we looked at lowering that, we, you know, then we realized, well, you know, we're gonna end up with this, you know, 20-inch veneer of brick that'll be sort of rather expensive, very minimal, and completely hidden by, by shrubs. So we had recommended, I'd recommended to the architect working on this, why don't you take all that stone and collect it up and use it somewhere? So, define the entry, the courtyard entry to the IL building. And put it all in a, a larger mass. So, fellow took, took and balanced the material quantity, for the most part, bringing it all up into a place that you'll, you'll actually see it, and then got rid of that detail that was around most of the building. On the east side of the building, which presents itself to the public area, that's all glass. And there's no shrubs there. So there, there was never any brick sill running along this face and that sort of the important public area of, of the building. So there's really no change there. So those were the stone and brick changes that occurred between schematic design when we initially submitted and throughout the design of the development, design development of the project.
Okay. Any comments on that?
Those changes make perfect sense to me.
Bill?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the, with the brick veneer.
Shall we let the architectural consultant look, look at that also? As long as we're just gonna have him look at the other one?
Good. It can't hurt. Five extra minutes or something for him? Okay. Alright. What else?
Those are the summary of the, those are, that covers all the changes they're requesting. I documented what we just discussed regarding the memory care building and the assisted living building in terms of the changes you're supportive of. All of it can be presented to your architectural consultant once it's received. We'll ask for those color options for the ephes treatment that's being proposed on the revised elevations. And we'll get our input for you as quickly as possible, leading up to the next meeting. That is scheduled for July 9th.
Yeah, so Rob, that bridge and that area around this development was, was really planned to be a focal point for the entire mixed-use district. And so, we really want to make sure that it, that it stays that way. And, and we don't, like I said earlier, take a look at it and say, why are we looking at the back of the building? Why are we?
Right.
So, hopefully that gives you some direction.
Well, yeah, AJ, can I add on to that?
Yeah, sure.
Because I'll, just, I, I think I just want to try to echo your thought and kind of add on to it, you know, and Rob, obviously you understand how the process goes, but, you know, on those initial drawings that was submitted to the Board, you know, we had an elevation that showed a complete building design around it with a mix of materials and, and it, like AJ said, it wasn't an ignored, I don't want to say an ignored surface, but it was an accounted-for surface. It, it was part of the four-sided package. And now, when you look at what's being proposed and substantially large piece of, of, of the building that would be converted to ephes, I think that's what AJ's trying to get at. And, and I think the, the Board too is why we want to get our consultant involved is, you know, we had a lot of rich materials there before. And stepping back to something like ephes treatment, even with multiple colors, may be something challenging for the Board to accept. So it's just something to consider as you go back to, to your team. To look at the before and after and see how you guys can, can get to some sort of, some sort of compromise between what's being proposed and what was originally approved by this Board, even though it was in its early stages prior to construction. So I, and correct me if I'm wrong, AJ, but that's kind of what I wanted to just try and catch here while we're talking about it.
Yes.
Okay. So, do you have what you need? So do you have what you need from us, Rob?
I do, with regards to the ephes, I do. Can you clarify with regards to the color change from white to the herringbone? Is that going to be acceptable, or does that need to go to your architectural reviewer?
I think we might as well have everything reviewed.
Open for discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's simply a, a material that now that the building isn't closed, they're looking to start the vinyl. It was, since it was approved for the IL.
We're all in favor of minimizing the white, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Yeah, it sounds like, it sounds like the consensus is have Chris comment on that.
As long as he's commenting.
As long as he's, I mean, I think where Pete's trying to go with, or Rob is trying to go with this, sorry, Rob. Is they probably want to get material ordered and do certain parts of it, not wait two weeks.
What I'm hearing from them is that the, the, the backup isn't suitable for, for brick or stone or some other kind of hard veneer, but it is suitable for ephes, so. I, I mean, subject to Chris's input, I don't see any reason to create a hardship for them. It's already under construction. So, let's, let's, let's see the two options that he's gonna give us and see what Chris has to say.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I was asking about the vinyl on the memory care, but the truth is, actually the, the memory care buildings are just starting framing, so they won't need that vinyl siding for a while, so.
Okay.
Next couple of weeks, we get those back. That's fine. And the colors, ephes, that's not an issue. And I will look at the backup to see if the backup will support other veneers, so we can look back and offer the best solution we can.
That would be great. Alright, we don't need to vote on this. I don't believe.
Correct. We can just, we can table this matter as an action item until your next meeting, which is scheduled for, like I said, July 9th.
Right.
And as long as we have the materials from both the applicant and from our consultant, then we can continue this discussion.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Good.
Okay.
Thank you, Rob.
Rob, thanks.
Thank, yeah, you're welcome. Thanks for your time.
Sure. Looks like that concludes our business. Zach, am I correct there?
You are correct. We do not have any public hearing items for July, just as a reminder for the Board, so this currently would be the one item that we would bring back for your discussion.
Okay. Alright. Well, with that, we will call this work session closed and adjourned, and wish everyone a great weekend and a great Fourth of July. And thank you for our freedoms.
And technology.